Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Wednesday, January 10th, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Next, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Agenda has been amended. The next order of business is proclamations. I believe we have one to be presented by Councilman Sharlin.
This is my first proclamation presenting in chambers here, and I'm happy to do it to my dear friend Michelle here. We're doing a proclamation for National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, so I guess I'll read the proclamation. I think that's how we do this. Whereas the United States Department of State defines human trafficking as a crime whereby traffickers exploit and profit at the expense of adults or children by compelling them to perform labor or engage in commercial sex, and whereas human trafficking is a $150 billion global industry, is one of the fastest growing criminal activities in the world, endangering the lives of millions of people around the world, and whereas human trafficking takes many forms, including forced labor, debt bondage, forced commercial sexual exploitation, and involuntary domestic servitude, and whereas victims of human trafficking are men, women, and children of all ages, but disproportionately women and girls, and whereas there are more than 40 million victims of human trafficking worldwide, and whereas it is estimated that hundreds of thousands of individuals are subjected to involuntary servitude in the United States, and whereas the Joint State Commission of the Commonwealth has reported that Pennsylvania is a pass-through state for human trafficking, as well as a source and destination for human trafficking victims, and whereas many strides have been made to bring awareness to the issue of human trafficking, and more needs to be done to combat the perpetrators of these crimes, and whereas sex trafficking and exploitation happens here in Pittsburgh, and its victims are people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic status, and whereas the city of Pittsburgh thanks law enforcement for their work in combating human trafficking, and whereas the city of Pittsburgh thanks the organizations in our city who worked tirelessly to provide support for survivors of victims of human trafficking, and whereas the city of Pittsburgh recognizes the first ever emergency home in Pittsburgh, opened by Refuge for Women in Pittsburgh in September 2023, where survivors of sex trafficking and exploitation now receive housing and trauma-informed treatment, including mental and physical health care, and whereas the residents of Pittsburgh can help fight human trafficking by educating themselves and others, volunteering with local organizations, and reporting suspicious human trafficking to the human trafficking hotline or law enforcement. And now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of January 2024 to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Proclamation has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I had the honor of being here on Monday for the inauguration and want to welcome all the new council members and the existing council members. One of the things that was mentioned on Monday was that we all need to be transparent and begin to talk about a lot of things that are happening in our city, and we call those at my organization courageous conversations. Talking about sex trafficking and exploitation isn't fun. It's actually ugly. It's horrible. But if we do not talk about it, if we do not raise awareness, and it is happening in each one of our districts in this city, it is happening in rural areas, it is happening to every demographic, it is happening to people who look like me, people who look like you. If we don't talk about it, it's not ever going to be addressed, and the women who we provide services to, they deserve the opportunity to leave this horrible life that they've been in, and I am very honored and very pleased that the city of Pittsburgh has recognized that and recognized that the emergency home is a valuable resource now in the city to help some of our most vulnerable population. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Want all members to come forward?
If you want. You don't have to have our mugs in.
And we have two proclamations to be read into the record, one from Councilwoman Smith and one from Councilwoman Strasburger.
Councilwoman Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, January 13th, 2024 to be John K. Weinstein Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 to be Celia Baron List Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council, and profanity will not be permitted. When you recall, please state your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Mary Moses.
Make any difference? Thank you for hearing me. I welcome everybody that's new to the council. My name is Mary Moses. I'm from Lawrenceville. I live in the senior high-rise at 36th Street. I'm here today to represent, and I'm not sure exactly what I represent, but to talk about the homeless in the city of Pittsburgh. I fail to understand why the city officials, the mayor, and others can't see that there's a crisis right now regarding the homeless in Pittsburgh. Yes, they address the problem. They clean up the tent cities. They continue to give lip service to what they can do and what possibly they can do further on. Last week, there was an op-ed in the Post Gazette. A woman on the north side had died and was eaten by rats. It was not on TV. It was not anywhere but that op-ed. This past Sunday, there was a small article in the Post Gazette from a social worker, social work student at Pitt, who said that we will not forget people like her, and I think that we really do. You know, it just hurts my heart to have this go on in our city. Why did this incident happen? You know, was there a welfare check? Do we do welfare checks on the homeless? I don't know. Some of the homeless people had talked to a social worker or somebody that had gone down there to give blankets and say that they hadn't seen this woman for a while, and when they went to check on her, of course, she was dead. Two of the shelters in downtown Pittsburgh closed recently, and that's a real shame. They opened two more, and that's a good thing. But the two that they opened are not enough. I don't see why there are other solutions to this problem. Couldn't we take over a building that was a former school? In downtown Pittsburgh, there's all the office buildings because people are working from home. Couldn't someone fund that? Salvation Army, Light of Life, Catholic Charities, other social service agencies should be able to maintain and run a place if they all work together. Could this be done? I'm not sure. Shouldn't this be done? I think so. I'm sure that money is an issue. Money is always an issue. But couldn't someone write grants to the government and to other places to help with the money? We just spent all of that money down here for a first night, and who was it for? Was it for the citizens of Pittsburgh? No, it was for the suburbanites to come in and see what Pittsburgh was like. We paid for EMS, for police, for vendors, for everybody, and the homeless just were there. What we need to do is we need to acknowledge homeless down here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Sover. Congratulations, Mr. Lavelle. Thank you for trying to get the meeting started closer to 10 o'clock. Toronto, Canada is the world's leader when it comes to diversity, 140 languages, and over 50% of the people are immigrants. I'm the Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024, cgsii.rlm-globalintelligence@gmail.com. I want to call attention to Wu Vishen, Asian-Chinese, Wilma Mankiller, Indigenous Cherokee, Dr. Michelle Deschelais, Latin-Chilean. A concern of, I think, non-vote-by-voter-verified for whom Pittsburgh Council is diversity, D as a key aspect of the U.S. and Pittsburgh Democratic Party offices of council and mayor, OCM-E, Agenda, which I think is hype. Mr. Lavelle and Mr. Ganey say equity, diversity for all, but in my view, it means primarily for some. OCM actions primarily apply ED to individuals and institutions of Black, African descent, secondarily to those of Indigenous, Latin American, and Asian descent. OCMED acts supply Pittsburgh taxpayer money to the Black Political Empowerment Group and African-American Leadership Foundation, 18 December 2023. I applaud that. I think that's a good idea, but there are groups which are excluded. I in the GIS can find no OCMED applications for copper Indigenous, bronze Latin American, gold Asian political empowerment groups, or Indigenous, Latin, Asian-American leadership institutions. The OCMED actions are generally evidentially pro-African descent and non-Asian, Latin and Indigenous. OCMED actions, in my view, show a pattern that is anti-diversity and pro-Black, which I think, in my view, can be construed as racist and unacceptable. To USA and Pittsburgh individuals of Indigenous, Latin American, and Asian descent who want assistance, contact the Asian-American Legal Defense Educational Fund, the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, which includes Latins, and the Native American Rights Fund. I invite confrontation. I want confrontation, but nonviolent, physically nonviolent confrontation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh servant of the public from the 1970s until 2021. Former Mayor Paduto was selected to be a member of a global group of mayors. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and country. How dare he appoint a board that said that the detrimental school building in Bonheur should remain? They did not care about the property value and quality of life issues that harmed Bonheur. Declaration of Rights. The Declaration of Rights of the Pennsylvania Constitution predates and was a model for the Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution. It is primarily a list of don'ts or the General Assembly in that it prohibits the enactment of laws that would infringe on certain rights. Those rights and prohibitions are set forth in the 28th section of the Declaration. Section 2, Political Powers. All power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasible right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such manner as they think proper. We have tried for over two years now to have Bonheur School torn down and turned into a green space. Self-proclaimed friends of the mayor and city employees are encouraging developers to buy the school. The school board would rather spend multiple times the price of the building that they're selling it instead of cut their losses. They have been, we have been harmed by the school closure and the detrimental building. Is the resistance to giving the building to the city or dollar related to desire for kickbacks? The mathematics of holding onto the school makes zero sense. Can we assume that lack of logic and mass skills are due to public education, or is there a lining of pockets involved? Where is the fiscal guidance? Interesting about the human trafficking, because we had someone come there and speak about how he came from an Eastern Bloc country, and he came from a trafficking situation. Deutsche Bank and JP Morgan have to pay the victims of Jeffrey Epstein, who ran a child sex trafficking operation, to blackmail politicians and others. The banks handled the money even after the prosecution of Epstein in 2006. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with Bonheur School. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Redden.
Hi, Melanie Redden from Bloomfield. I spoke before at an October meeting asking this city to call for a ceasefire in Palestine and to take steps to stop our tax dollars paying for the mass murder of Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank. Since that time, at least 17,000 more people have been murdered by bombs and other acts of genocide, 7,000 of them children, bringing the total to at least 22,000 lives and 10,000 children lost. But today, I want to share with you the story of a Palestinian man, Bilal Abdu Saman, who we first met as he carried a baby he rescued from under the rubble where her parents died. Bilal was a physical education teacher, fitness trainer, Olympics ambassador, husband, and father of three children. Even after doing all of that, he took time to care for his elderly father, making his story especially dear to me as someone who helps care for an elderly parent. I'd like to give credit to Nala Abdelsadeq for covering his story. As Pittsburgh struggles to house our own residents, leaving them to camp in tents during the cold winter in snow, which I've seen with my own eyes outside of the Marriott Downtown, our money goes to pay for the bombs that leave Gazans in tents, leading to the death of at least one child so far due to hypothermia. I second the call for increased shelters for our homeless population, and I reject the notion that we can't afford it. Our money paid to take Bilal and so many beautiful human beings like him from their families and communities. As the International Court of Justice hears the case against Israel's genocide tomorrow, we urge you to pay attention to our complicity in the most real-time documented livestreamed genocide in our history. We will not rest until there is a ceasefire, and we won't forget the lawmakers who stood by doing nothing as we all watched. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Bolton. Is Jason Bolton with us? If not, our next speaker is Chad Ringblum.
Good morning. My name's Chad Ringblum. I'm from the South Hills. I had something prepared. I'm gonna scrap some of it because what I've heard this morning is it's a perfect illustration of the human condition, that human beings are made in God's image. Surely animals don't have the same regard for other animals that we have for them or for other humans, that hyenas, for example, will actually start eating their prey while it's still alive. And yet, while we're made in the image of God, our decision-making is unquestionably and totally marred by sin. And I say this because earlier, maybe, I don't know if it was the last meeting, there was a ban on foie gras, concern for animal suffering. The other animal suffering bans were they were tabled for further consideration. Again, it's not right to go against conscience. It's not right, and it's not safe to go against conscience, so I applaud you if you believe that true suffering is taking place, to place bans on things to prevent that. And with that said, the marring by sin, this same body has not only given shelter to people who harm the lives of children, but this same body has also given shelter to those who would profit off of the deaths of unborn children. Romans 1:18 says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who by their unrighteousness suppress the truth." This speaks to what exactly is going on here. By nature, sinful humanity and our desires to ourselves become God, suppress the obvious truth about God revealed in general revelation. We ignore this in order that we might do what God hates. I'm speaking to your consciences here. What are you going to do about this obvious cruelty to human beings? Have you no regard for the lives of humans? You have more regard for animals than you do for humans. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. Pastor Joe Griffo, South Hills. Do want to speak to the ordinance regarding the ban on foie gras in the efforts to ban fur sales and horse-drawn carriages, and I want to point out and press upon the members of this council the inconsistency, the irrationality, and the reprehensibility of making Pittsburgh a sanctuary city for abortion while seeking to ban the above-mentioned practices. According to an article in Trib Live, December 18th, 2023, it stated that, quote, "Foie gras is created by forcing a foot-long tube down the bird's throat and injecting unhealthy amounts of food into the stomach," end quote. Councilwoman Warwick is quoted as saying, quote, "This is about animal cruelty," end quote. Natalie Awasch of Executive Action Humane Animal Pittsburgh is quoted as saying, quote, "The ban on foie gras reflects our values and the importance of responsible and more compassionate practices in our community," end quote. My contention is not necessarily with the ban, but to point out if such care and concern is directed towards the welfare of birds, how much more should be directed to the actual human beings, image bearers of God? It is sad that a foot-long tube is forced down the throat of a bird, but that doesn't compare to the procedure involved in abortion, where steel instruments are used to crush skulls, to dismember limb by limb, and then to vacuum and suck out the remains. It's about animal cruelty, we're told. What about the cruelty and violence that takes place in the womb every time abortion is performed? The ban, we are told, reflects the values and acknowledges the importance of responsible and compassionate practices. Well, how does the ordinance that allows Pittsburgh to be a sanctuary city for seeking abortion, for those seeking abortion, reflect such virtues? Now, you may say it's our concern for the woman, but you're forgetting the actual victim, and that's the child. Your concern for the actual bird, your concern for the actual horses, your concern for the actual foxes, but not for the actual babies. It is absolutely inconsistent, irrational, and morally reprehensible to ban one and yet to embrace the other. Now, you might write me off as a mere religious person, but I do submit to you, if there is no God, why should we care about what we do with birds and foxes and horses? We're simply exercising our evolutionary superiority over less evolved and weaker creatures. But if there is a God, and there is, then we are stewards of creation. We do care for every aspect. We can say what constitutes cruelty to animals and why cruelty to animals is wrong. Proverbs 12 says, "The righteous care for the needs of the animal." It's this very same God who places a much higher value on humans created in His very image. Jesus said in Matthew 10, "Are not two sparrows sold for a penny, and not one of them will fall to the ground apart from your Father. Fear not, therefore; you are of more value than many sparrows." I implore you to reconsider, reevaluate, and repeal the reprehensible ordinance making this city a sanctuary city for the atrocity of abortion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District on Bedford Avenue. Today, I'm gonna deviate a little bit because we have council that says that we cannot speak about something if it is not gonna come before city council. Well, this may come before city council, something that my sister wanted. I have a sister. My sister passed a couple of weeks ago. If I get a little teary, just turn. I know I can get real ugly when I'm crying. If I do, just turn your head, but you must listen to what I'm saying. You need to hear that. You council people need to hear what I'm saying. Okay, there was nine of us my mother had, but when she went to have her ninth child, when she went in the hospital, they took all of us, eight of us, and they split us up in foster homes. I was maybe five. I really don't know what age I was, but they split us up. And when I went to the obituary, I was talking about my sister. I ended up telling them about how when I went to that foster home, she said, "You can call me Virginia or Miss Gray, or you could call me Mom." And there was a foster sister that I had, she was 18 months older, that they said was her child, their children, their child, but she was a foster child like me. Okay, when we were in that home, I can remember my sister Beverly came, and she would say, "You got a sister named Wendy?" And she would tell us where all our sisters and brothers was. She was like the matriarch of our family. Now, when they called me and told me that she was going to the hospital, she was real bad off, and it may be she, two or three days, but it was in a couple hours they called back and said she was dead. And they said that I have a daughter. Trish came from Georgia to take care of my sister, and I was saying, "I gotta get to her." So it ended up that I went to Allegheny General. Allegheny General, they were magnificent. I was really upset. They treated me so kind, and they didn't take her there, and I didn't know why. Well, I found out she didn't want to go there. She wanted to go to West Penn where she was born. She knew she was dying. She wanted to die there. Okay, but I want to say, I usually come down and I'm fussing about the different things. Let me tell you about Allegheny General Hospital, the emergency room. The way that they treated me, and I know I was upset, I just said, "I gotta get to my daughter." They treated me so kind, and they told me she was in West Penn, and I'm saying, "Why would they do that? She lived at the top of the hill." Well, I found out she didn't want to go. But I want you and everybody to notice, listen to me. At Allegheny General, the way that they treated me, there is a God. They treated me just, I mean, I know I was upset, but she loved her doctor, her daughter, her doctor. her doctor. The president of the hospital should know, Beverly Ann Hunter, her doctor, you must go to him and tell him that she loved him, and she said he took care of her.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. From the old Flamingo Club in the Hill District, to Walt Harper's Attic in Market Square, to the discos on the north side, to the Grove, I was there when they celebrated their 69th year for underage kids. Disco dancing at Bridgeville. Music brings people together. My own mother got busted with her dad sitting in her chair when she skivvied up the pine tree on Conopla Street in Sheridan, because she escaped to go dance at the Grove. Music brings us together. I'm surprised Point State Park on Juneteenth didn't break away to an island. I turned around, and the whole entire lawn was filled with little kids to people in their 90s line dancing. I tried something. I did a little test. When I hear people arguing on the streets, I hit play. I got this cute little thing for $19.99. I hit play, and they stop, and they're like, "Sister jamming." Same scenario everywhere. I go into Steel Plaza, Pittsburgh cops, yeah. Target, Market Square, your employees that are doing a wonderful job cleaning our streets. You could have, you could have a database where people can pick doo-wop day, funk day, disco day, whatever. Somebody says, "Oh, they play music up at, at the City County Building." Really? Go to the vulnerable areas where you have trouble. Play music, and your people are going to be happy. Pittsburgh is known for this. Kari, I think it was you that was talking about the cultural district? Let, let the people get involved. It brought me out of four years of being in bed. I danced in the water at the Jewish Community Center. Now, next topic, very quick. The seniors need to have the choice of 100% vegan, per the Book of Genesis, as we're talking about, the Bible. I don't eat anything with a mother, anything that had a soul, anything that had eyeballs. They kept telling me, "Move the vegetables away and just eat the meat." I finally looked at them, and I said, "That's like telling the rabbi to move the ham off the sandwich and just eat the cheese." Yeah, that's what I feel when you tell me to move the meat away from the vegetables and eat it. They have, they heard me. I can get, and anybody else can get, a vegan plate at the Jewish Community Center, but that needs to be in all the Pittsburgh Healthy Living Centers. We should never be told, "Oh, you can eat fish." No, some of us are 100% vegan, par the original diet that God made us. Amen and maazel tov.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers? Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, that'll take us to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Stand up and say, "Thank you, Mr. President." Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your grace here.
Thank you.
Counselperson Charlin presents Bill Number 16, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Pittsburgh City Controller to Perform an Audit of Code Violations That Escalate to Magisterial District Court from Point of Origin to Resolution Pursuant to the Powers Outlined in the Home Rule Charter.
That takes us to Councilwoman Calkhill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 6, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 5203 Columbo Street at No Cost to the City. Bill Number 7, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a permanent easement with the Pennsylvania American Water Company for the installation, maintenance, repair, operation, and removal of a water line on city-owned property. Bill Number 9, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $12,622,642 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment, and Accessories. Equipment Support Infrastructure and Professional Services for the Use by City of Pittsburgh
Okay, thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you. No new papers, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr.
Counselperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 8, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Apply for Grand Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Local Share Account Statewide, to Provide Funding for the Purchase of Vehicles for the Pittsburgh Park Rangers. The grant proposal includes an ask of $90,000 for this stated purpose. In Bill Number 10, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incurring of Non-Electoral Debt through the Issuance of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City of Pittsburgh in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $62,495,000.
That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
No new, no new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Wilson presents Bill Number 11, Resolution Amending Resolution 614 of 2023 entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with HR and A Advisors for the Purpose of Assisting in the Development of a Strategic Plan for the Department of City Planning at a Cost Not to Exceed $109,000 over one year.
Thank you. And I have no bills, so that moves us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before city council? Seeing none, that also takes us to reports of final committee, of which there is none. Therefore, that moves us to motions or resolutions. Are there any motions or resolutions? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a standing, I'm gonna come to you, this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a standing committee meeting. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 p.m. today. Tomorrow, Thursday, January 11, council will hold a briefing for members as relates to debt. The first session will begin at 11:30 a.m., and the second session will begin at 12:30. And on Monday, January 15, council and the clerk's offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Then on Tuesday, January 16, council will hold a briefing for members as it pertains to the Department of Public Works Anti-Litter Program, the first session beginning at 2:00, and the second session beginning at 2:45. And lastly, on Wednesday, January 17, at 10 a.m., council will hold its regular meeting, and then at 1:30, the standing committee meeting. To register to speak at both meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. There's two things. I need to call for a post-agenda for human trafficking. We have a human trafficking post-agenda planned where it will be the first time a panel of survivors will speak, and that's on Saturday, the 20th, but I need to call for a post, cable cast post-agenda for that.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the second one, as discussed with you and Councilwoman Strasburger, and our budget office, and our, you know, council solicitor, that I would like to call for a briefing on the budget, the 2024 budget, and we want to include OMB, finance, possibly the Controller's Office, to talk about any possible budgetary impacts from the possible assessment refunds that, that may be coming up, and what we might have to do to make sure that we're addressing the budget. So a post-agenda, or a briefing regarding the budget and possible reassessment refunds.
Assessments regarding the buildings downtown?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll walk with the clerk's office to get both those scheduled. Is there anything else from members? If not, an emotion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.